Council called me to order for the record. It is August 22nd, 2023 at 4:30 PM. We'll begin this evening's work session with real call tenants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. First time up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hoagland. I move that we adopt the agenda as published. Have a motion of second to adopt the agenda's published. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favoring sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. First item up is a consent agenda. Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Hoagland. I move that we prove the consent agenda in for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest. Have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favoring saying by saying aye. Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So we're going to go into department commission reports. Tonight, we're going to do recognition of long-term employees, one at 25 and one at 30 years with the city of Meridian. And we're going to start with our 25-year employee. So I'm asked the council president, vice president, they're going to go ahead and do these presentations on behalf of the city this evening. So council president, I think that you'll be up and Ms. Parsons, if you'd like to join him at the podium.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's a pleasure to be up here and to get to talk a little bit about Matt Parsons and his career at the city of Meridian, but it didn't start here. Started in the, you'll start a law enforcement in 1990 for the city of Glensberry as patrolman. And what he's appointed as police chief in 1994. And during that time, he attended the FBI's Command College and Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command. And then on February 27th, day that we'll remember, 1998, he accepted a position as a patrol officer for the city of Meridian. And he's been busy since then. And so let me read this list. It is extensive. He was assigned or promoted to the following positions. 2000 to 2002, assigned to the FBI's Treasure Valley Gang and Violent Crime Task Force. Where he's awarded with an FBI Olympic medal from the Office of FBI Director Robert Mueller for support during the 2002 Salt Lake Olympics. 2002 promoted to corporal and patrol. 2003 awarded the police star as result of a police action. 2004 promoted to sergeant in patrol. 2007 through 10, assigned as both the administrative sergeant and the traffic team sergeant. 2008 awarded the supervisor of the year. 2007 through 17, assigned to the Ada County Emergency Communications Planning Committee, which was collateral duty. 2010, assigned as patrol sergeant. 2012 awarded the police star as the result of a police action. 2013, assigned as the community services sergeant. 2016, signed back as patrol sergeant. 2020 awarded the supervisor of the year. 2020 assigned as the property crimes detective sergeant. So that's quite the list and a lot of experience there. And just a personal, I have to say, I've done several ride-alongs and it was with Sergeant Parsons that I got to be in a high speed. It wasn't a chase. We were paralleling the suspect in case they turned south. So I learned a lot about what high speed and how many miles over you can go, and this is what you do. So he did this, we're flying down Franklin Road and he's telling me all this as we're going along. So I learned a lot. Oh, okay. You're paying close attention to everything that was going on. So even my questions. But it's very obvious, Matt loves the city of Meridian. He loves his job. He's dedicated to our community. And he does treat people with the respect and dignity that they deserve. And and maybe sometimes I think even if they don't deserve it, you treat people right and it's the right way, right way to go. He's married to his wife, Brooke. They have two adult children, Christopher and Katie. And he has three wonderful granddaughters between the ages of five and 15. In his spare time, which I don't know if you have much of, he loves to bass fish camp and be with his family. So Matt, we want to congratulate you on your 25 years of service and all your accomplishments. And thank you very much. We have some goodies for you. I don't know. Are they giving statements afterwards?
They're more than welcome to if they'd like to make any comments.
Appreciate you guys coming out. No, that's it. I just enjoy working with each and every one of you and except you. No, I'm kidding. No, I you, of course. No, I do. I enjoy working with each and every one of you and I appreciate your support. And you know, him reading that list, it sure went a lot faster than the last 25 years here have gone. It, but truly it does feel like a blink of an eye. 25 years has gone by pretty quickly. So savor the time, enjoy the time. Don't constantly think about retirement because before you know it, it'll be right there. Thank you. I just appreciate everybody working with me here too. Thank you.
And Councilor, I think you're getting a picture with them with the certificate. They're waiting for that in the front row.
Sonia keeps falling down, so I guess we just. Yeah, it's two. They give me two.
Next up, we will have Sonia join Councilman Borton at the podium for 30-year recognition.
I didn't know she started here when she was 10.
So a quick comment, Matt, one of the things, one of the many things that you do really well. Your disarming sense of humor, right? It just makes everyone comfortable to be around you, but it also makes you a joy to work with. And I've heard that from several people. You like to make work fun. You're very good at what you do. But you're also able to make people laugh and feel comfortable in difficult situations. And that's hard to do in your profession. We're blessed to have you do it at Meridian. So congratulations to you. I'm now going to take everybody back to 1993. Is Brian here? That's the year Brian was in sixth grade. And little did we know that during that sixth grade year, Brian would then have a coworker named Sonia Allen, who had just begun her work at the city of Meridian. 30 years from now, or 30 years ago. And back 30 years ago, when Sonia joined our planning department, Meridian looked much different than it does today. Obviously. The population, the population of Meridian in 1993 was, any guesses? Too high, too high, too high, too high. 13,000 people. Okay. The city area has grown during Sonia's tenure by 250%. And the subdivisions that our community have, have grown by 200%. So obviously, her 30 years, Sonia's played an instrumental role in the growth and development of our city, north, south, east and west. And a lot of the success that you hear in our community that we're benefiting from is due in large part to some of Sonia's leadership in our planning department. Her supervisor, Bill Parsons, describes Sonia as moody, greedy. Sorry, wrong one. As easygoing. Bill Parsons described Sonia as easygoing with a great sense of humor. And this, I love this quote here. This is so true. Her laugh is infectious and you know when she's in the building. Amen. No, amen. Laugh, laughter is contagious. She makes Bill's job easier and he looks forward to being with her, with her neighbor for many more, his neighbor for many more years. But I also know, and I know from up here on the dais over more than a decade, Sonia takes her job very seriously. And has always had the city's best interest at heart. I've single-handedly watched Sonia make difficult decisions, have tough discussions with members of the public or the development community because it's what was right for the city. And there's some components of, of commercial and residential parts of our community that are much better. And none of us know about because Sonia spoke up early in the process. Did things that are difficult and might have upset some people, but it made our community better. That's not easy to do. That's leadership. On a personal level, Sonia was born and raised in Nampa. She spends her time away from work doing darn near everything you can do outside. Fishing, traveling, camping, hiking, going to the mountains, skiing, riding horses, and you have two horses. Have two horses and two cats and a rabbit. And Jared. In no particular order. Sonia has a big heart. Anyone who works with her knows that's very true. And she, she loves and is loved by her family and friends. She would do anything for them and is always there to provide support and to cheer them on. It's true, not only for her family, but the coworkers, including everyone in this room. So it's no surprise that the room is full today for Sonia and Matt. We want to thank you, Sonia, for your 30 years of service to our community. We love you and appreciate you and all that you do. And we have treats for you as well. And we're going to take a picture. Okay. First, you want to come to the mic and say a few words.
Are you getting me the short mic? Joe, what are you saying? Thank you all for taking time out of your day to day to attend. This is very nice. It was unexpected. I had no idea this was what this was going to be. This is like a retirement party kind of thing. I don't think I'm retiring. The best part of my tenure at the city is getting to meet all the different people that I've met from the public, coworkers. And many are now friends. And that's, that's been the best part of all this. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all. And congratulations so far on your career so far. But you know, it is not over from that standpoint. My, my now obligation is informing you all that there's cake in conference rooms AMB for those who would like to go have a slice. Airbase is excused to do that, except for Caleb, who must stick with us for the next agenda item on this evening. So so save him one piece, but thank you and congratulations and.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
While, while people are exiting, just wanted to commend you and maybe HR or the department director.
Councilman Cavanagh, hold on one second. There's a kerfuffle.
Kerfuffle?
Okay, try now.
I just was going to say thanks. I don't, I don't think we've ever done this before. At least I can't recall.
Hearing any audio from you.
Okay.
I don't know if it's, try it again.
Mr. Mayor. Don't worry about it.
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 17, which is discussion regarding public hearing notice as required in Meridian's code 11-5 A6D2. Turn this conversation over to Mr. Hood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I did listen to the discussion, open mic at the beginning of your, your meeting last week. So I am up to speed on, on that conversation. As was noted last week, that project is done, but looking forward, I'm just, we'll stand and have a conversation then for what, if any changes need to be made to our ordinance regarding posting a public hearing notice. So I just want to start with where we're at now and what's on the books. I think you know this, but all, all public hearings do require some form of posting. We can also talk about the notice that the clerk sends out. And in fact, that came up last week too, and next door that we do as an additional courtesy, not required by our ordinance currently, but as an additional currency courtesy to neighbors using the next door app and then the mailed notice and newspaper notice. But the, the posting of the site is required again for all but two public hearings. And that's for vacation comprehensive plan amendments. And I'm sorry, and short plats. Those have to be posted 10, not, not less than 10 days prior to that hearing on any of your public streets that you have frontage on. It does not talk about at all, and this was the main complaint last week was on when those right of ways that are adjacent to a project are closed. We were, we are, were aware, I don't know that we connected the dots about the intersection being closed at the same time that this project was coming through. That is not part of our typical process to look and see if there may be a road closure coming up in the foreseeable future as we're scheduling these for public hearings. It just hasn't been part of our thought process thus far. I guess I kind of want to hear from you all before I propose anything. That being said though, that, that could be problematic. And then defining if there is a water line that breaks or something like that during this process, does that, is that, and the roads closed for a couple of hours, is that should, should a project be continued because someone may have driven by during that time when the road was closed and they never saw it? I don't want to get into all those hypotheticals, but there, there are some, definitely some concerns with that. What about if we don't even know about the roadway being closed for a certain amount of time, yet we go forward with the public hearing? So anyways, we do require the four by four signs for most all projects in the city. I do appreciate the comments last week that was brought up by the neighborhood. I will say, going back to that one project in particular, on the Locust Grove side of that, it's my understanding you could see the sign because the access into the adjacent subdivision was still open and the sign was placed prior to that closure. So anyone using Locust Grove would have seen the sign, but if you're coming in on victory, you wouldn't have seen the sign because that was an active construction and, and would have been past the barricade or the road closure sign. So we could envision how someone wouldn't have seen the sign in that case. If you're on, on victory. So anyways, I can pull up the code if you want to look at it line by line. But just following the, the conversation from last week, I'm here to have that discussion, potentially answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council comments, questions? Councilman Board.
Just from, I'm not certain that there's, there's gaping holes in our existing code because that's kind of my starting point and we provide notice in a variety of manners, you know, the next door, the supplementary ways to do it is of interest, but there's, I think there's always going to be occasions where the anomaly occurs and the road's closed. And so I didn't come into preparation for today thinking that what is going to be the wholesale change to how we provide public notice? Because I didn't accept the premise that it's fault, you know, deficient anyway. Every now and then something's going to happen and we don't have to throw it out. So that was my perspective. I don't have recommendations of additional things to do. Beyond perhaps the next door and I envision more of a singular focused repository. So people always know they should, they can look in this one place for notice of what's coming up. To some context.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, we wanted to get input from council on this just because that was, that was a concern for the person who spoke last week. And and it does raise that question because you know, going down U stick and I look at black cat headed north is closed for quite some time. And there's, if we had an application before us, it's, it's open to local use, but you know, it's one of those things that if it's going to be closed and is it a process question, Caleb? That maybe staff add it to their checklist of just to double check to see if ACHD has a major closure. I think to Councilman Borton's point, there isn't any deficiency in what we require. Just the fact that, and if, if there's an emergency and it's closed for a day, I don't think that matters, but an application comes forward where there's, it's, it's closed for a significant period of that time. How do we rectify that? And and just a review of looking at ACHD and their road closures map or those types of things, just to say nothing, nothing here that we saw and then, then move on type of thing. I don't know if that's easily, easy to do from your process because there's a lot of boxes you have to check in that, those applications. So I don't know. I'd like your input on that.
So Mr. Mayor, Council President Hoagland, you know, to your, to your last comment, our checklist is, is pretty lengthy, but we do follow it. We're, we're to a point now in that process where going off of memory just doesn't work because there, there is so many steps in the process. So I think adding something like that to an SOP isn't out of the question. I think it is doable. I just, I hesitate a little bit. Now, again, we can do that. But if we miss something or something's added to Rita ACHD's website that we would go to and we could just look and see what's scheduled along the roadway in this area and see if the road's closed or not. Something's added the next day though, you know, I so we can add that as sort of a best practice, but doesn't guarantee that there won't be a day or two or three day closure of that 10-day window. Now you're talking a third of the time that, that, that someone in theory couldn't see the sign. So again, I'm not averse necessarily to adding that to our, hey, double check and just see. And if you see one, then maybe we bring it up. I guess that would be my follow-up question though. What if the road is closed? Do we delay the application for a year? Do we say, sorry, we don't process it for, until the road gets open to get, I don't know what the next step is then. What, what do we do if we find one? And it's like, well, I've got this application that's complete, except for ACHD is going to close the road. So we'd have to have that part of the conversation then. And we can even informally start to look at doing that. But again, if you know, and we could potentially schedule, if it's a short closure and it's, you know, something for the week and they're doing utility work, maybe we can make that correspond better. But if it's a long-term closure, a black cat or a locust grove, do we put a pause on all development for six months or a year while it's closed? I, I don't know the answer.
And I think some of it might go back to the question, what is the purpose of the sign? And I know there's a code purpose. But just council view is for the neighbors. Does it mean it's for the general traveling commuting public? You know, it, because that can help answer that second question. Is if you are going to say, we'll do it even though that road is closed, then who are you then notifying further potentially with that, if anybody? You know, so yeah, I know some people think that they live two miles away and that impacts them. Those signs have value because that's the only way that they would in theory be Councilman Strater.
Yeah. The only thing I was thinking was probably if you were going to change something, your best chance would be at the time the sign is placed. Right? So if, if at the time the sign is placed, the road is closed. That seems like a pretty obvious milestone where you could at least maybe expand the distance that we send, you know, letters to neighbors. That was my only thinking, but I don't see how you can overcome it except for to directly contact people at their home address in the vicinity. I, I'm not aware of any other time that this has happened. Are you?
So Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater. I'm not aware. I would guess it has happened though sometime again, road closure for some length of time anyways. But I have not, I'm not aware of the same concern complaint, whatever, however you want to categorize it from the general public. I will, on your scenario, and I think we're, we're trying to get the word out. We're trying to hide the ball. I think the, the, what I'd want to call to your attention though is the posting is actually the last in that series of forms of notice we try to provide the public. So at 10 days, it's too late then to try to get a letter to somebody and say, hey, we would have thought you could have saw the sign, but you can't. So now we're sending, because the clerk, I mean, we're putting a lot of pressure on the clerk to drop everything. Get it out the next day by mail. You're still two or three weekend and they're somewhere. And the hearing's Tuesday. So you know, are you providing them advanced notice at that point if we try to mail something last minute? Because the notices that go out to neighbors are done about a month before the hearing. And the newspapers, two weeks, which we got that to the newspaper to put in the newspaper two weeks before that. So
that's what I share.
Yeah, no, thanks for, for walking us through that. That makes sense. And I think what it speaks to is what may be more appropriate is just to look at our distance that we use in general for notices. And I know we go through it periodically, but just take a look at that again, because this is one of those circumstances that that generally would mitigate. It feels more appropriate to me to just look at that standard and and I'll take a look at whether that's appropriate as opposed to trying to set up a and I'll take a look at whether that's appropriate as opposed to trying to set up a specific set of actions based on a road closure. It sounds like that'll be really impractical.
Councilman Pro.
Unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to review last week's meeting, but just wanted to get clarification from Caleb. It's my understanding that the applicant, you know, this is, this is the applicant's responsibility. They generally take a photograph of where the, the sign is placed. And they have to abide by very specific requirements for that sign placement. So in my opinion, that, that it now becomes, this is on the applicant, in my opinion, not on the city. If the applicant, surely whoever's going to be developing an area knows that there's a road closure. If they haven't, that would be super surprising. Because if they own that property, they would have gotten noticed, but also, you know, if they're getting ready to potentially start development at some point, I just, I would be very surprised if an applicant didn't know of a significant road closure. Again, we're not talking about a couple of days or a water line breaking or something. But in my opinion, this is the applicant's responsibility to make sure that that sign is placed in an area that's visible. Um, and if they are placing it 10 days before, um, then they need to check with ACHD, call ACHD and ask if there's going to be any closures in the next 10 days before that meeting happens. And then that's another item that has to be verified when they send that photograph in. Maybe I'm way off base on what the, what it is that we're discussing here, but I think I got the picture. So in, in my mind, this is really an applicant's responsibility to be, to be, um, you know, mindful of where that sign goes and whether it can be seen with obstructions.
Councilman Ogden.
Caleb, the applicant on, on one of these parcels can only post that sign on the affected parcel. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, um, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Overton, the sign placement is securely on the land being considered along each roadway that is adjacent. So on their property adjacent to any public right of way.
In hearing, talking about past history, it certainly sounds like this is not something that happens all. It does sound like notification neighbors went out, the next door notifications went out. People that were on Locust Grove could see the sign. But it was only certain people that were coming in on victory that couldn't see this. Don't know what you could have done to an applicant with a city in this case that would have changed that visibility with the limitations that the signage is up.
If I could speak to that, as someone that lives in that area and traveled that road every day to work, you can never see a sign. He, there was no reason for me, no reasonable reason why I would have gone beyond the turnpoint to off of Locust Grove unless I lived in the subdivision up there. So again, if, if the purposes of people around there, because typically ACHD has to provide local access. So the people with local access, if there's a home adjacent to it, might see it. Not, not in all situations from that standpoint. And I think their first default is try to always leave any road open for road construction. However, Lake Hazel is not passable during the construction this year. Locust Grove was not passable during construction through certain parts of it. So, you know, if, if there are parts and times when, uh, no one would ever drive by the property. And that's really, I think the question for council is if, if you're comfortable with that, that no one may drive by and see a sign, you know, it's like, it goes back to hell. If you cut down the tree in the forest and no one's there to hear it, did it really happen? Same thing. You can post it, but if no one there has ever see it, what's the point and purpose? In that regards, understanding, you know, um, I didn't think about to ask the question when they came in and say, well, who saw the sign on the property? I wasn't thinking that the road was closed for that property when they came in, in that regards. And so it is a conundrum. I think it's just really what's the comfort level of council, knowing that you may have an application where people, if a road in the afterward was closed, are you okay with that? You know, instead of paying Monday morning quarterback, if someone coming in and asking for reconsideration saying, we never knew because the sign, you know, we couldn't get by the road. Are you okay with that concept? Um, and if so, you know, then legally it's the posting, it's not saying anyone ever has to see it. You know, that's not what the law states, but what's your viewpoint on the intent in that regards?
So Mr. Mayor, if I can, uh, maybe just a little bit more context and your question's a good one. I, I've questioned that myself and I, I think it is more for the general traveling public along that corridor, although what is really their interest in the development of that land? If I'm just a commuter by that property, what am I going to come and testify to the council or planning and zoning commission on? So I think it's a little bit broader than a 300 or a 500 or a thousand foot radius, maybe, but maybe just or more of a public service type of an announcement that something's going to happen here, not necessarily to draw them to a hearing, but if they had some concerns or history or whatever, it did allow them an opportunity. Couple of things though, that I do want to, um, mention and also along the lines of your comments. We do require, so 10 days, the sign has to go up within seven days of the hearing, they have to submit the photos showing where they placed them and then they're up and that they read with the information that's supposed to be there. We don't have them submit a, a photo on day six or day five or four, the wind may have blown it over and we've gotten those complaints before. Or alleged that the developer put it up, took the picture, took them down, may or may not have, I don't know, but we got a picture from them seven days before. So there's some things that way that even with these posting that we, we verify at a point in time, there was a sign up there, whether people could see it or not, that can be debated. The other thing, I'll just call to your attention a little bit. I should have probably read this at the beginning of my opening remarks, which weren't very good, but the sign placement part of that. At the end of it, it says, in circumstances where placing signs per the standards listed herein is not practical. The director may identify an alternative sign placement strategy. So we have had that from time to time. In fact, cul-de-sac streets that are sub-street in a subdivision that hasn't even been developed yet and they're developing the next phase of it. No one can go down there. In fact, it's blocked off. It's still public right of way. That's been improved, but there's no one in those subdivisions who said, yeah, don't put it there. Why don't you put two over here where people are likely to see it and, and things like that. So we have done a, an alternative sign placement strategy. Doesn't happen very often and we consult with legal when we do that. Um, but there have been some times where it's like, hey, there's actually this drive over here that may catch more people's eye than if we put it at this sub-street. So why don't, why don't we spend the resources here so we can notify the public, whoever that is, that, you know, again, the traveling public, um, a, a little bit larger version, still within the neighborhood. But, um, anyway, so just a couple more things that it's not perfect. I don't think it's broken either, but it may not be perfect because again, you could have a hurricane run through three days before and the sign fell down or, or whatever. And, um, so we, we do the best we can, but that's just a little more, that's more to chew on.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I was just going to add for some context. I mean, the Idaho code in this particular arena is pretty archaic and that's why cities have generally enhanced their notification process because the Idaho code doesn't really do much. I mean, in, in the 25 plus years I've been doing land use law, I have never heard one person say, I read the notice of the paper. Never, ever. The sign is probably the most common method that people do see it and I understand it, but everything is generally built to within the control of the applicant. They can control where the sign goes. They can't control if the sign blows over, they can't control if somebody defaces the sign, they can't control if the road gets closed, they can't control the weather. So everything that we place on the applicant to do are things within their ability to do. So again, they could choose where the sign goes. If we determine that it's not the right spot, like Caleb said, that's probably been our most common circumstances. Say, well, there, there's two streets here. One kind of faces the public, the other one faces a dead end street. But nobody's ever going to see it and we tell them add another one the other way. So we have worked with folks. This particular one, again, we have heard that before. I couldn't see it. But generally it's there. I mean, it is there. And I think even Councilman Hogan commented last week, there were a couple of adjacent neighbors and said they saw the sign. So there are certainly adjacent people that did see it, but certainly not everyone. But I think we do have a system that is work pretty well on most every occasion. Because once we start parsing it out, then you get really, well, if they do this at P and Z, I would never want to do, as Caleb facetiously was saying is you can't develop because we happen to sign up. That's really holding a, a pretty much hostage of a property owner over something that they can't control. So I would never suggest you do that. But I think we have worked with people pretty, pretty regularly to make sure we do the best we can to make sure they're known. And remember, in, in many of these, you've got a fairly lengthy process between going to planning and zoning and then coming before you. So there's a, a few months process of this going on besides the neighborhood meetings and everything else.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Caleb, your language that, that is in code satisfies it for me. It affords the discretion for the developer and planning staff, the professionals who most are in the know at the particular project in its location to address noticing and creating a creative solution early in the process as to maybe an alternate location for signs on a very unique case by case basis. Without defining 19 different parameters and checklists and boxes, that blanket statement is full of professional trust. This, it sounds like it's designed for these rare, rare scenarios, but fits perfectly. And I would trust that our staff has the ability that you understand the intent that we want to be creative when necessary to afford folks a better chance of getting public notice. And that you do just that. Every now and then we're going to have the sign blow down and unique circumstance, but it sounds like to me the language is there and you utilize it appropriately.
So, so maybe put into the SOPs, just a review of known road closing. You know, when I was thinking about this, I was thinking about stuff in the five year work plan as your, you know, general, when you're looking at stuff as the basis, I, I get it. There could be a lot more. You know, people can come in and kind of cut something for utility and a road can be closed for three weeks. That kind of to the point, the entire timeframe that that site should be posted could be, you know, six, eight weeks. There's not a lot of road closures unless they're a major redo where the entire timeframe is that going to be closed, but you know, from my perspective, yeah, if you're looking at it and you identify, yeah, if we could have put them right where both roads stopped where they had them. People may have seen them. They may have looked at them and that's, if that's that discretion within there, that could work, but it's just getting people to think about it if it's an, an item or not.
Can I make one more comment? And I think you all are aware of this, but Chris is awesome. He, uh, you know, part of, no one reads the newspaper anymore. Still part of our process, still required and we do it. Next door probably hits more people, but education too. I mean, we try to hit 300, 300 or 500. We, we hope that people talk to their neighbors, they, hey, did you hear there's an application? You can go testify. So word of mouth or grassroots type of thing. But Chris went above and beyond last week too, to follow up with this gentleman that was here to say, hey, going forward, here's how, you know, city's website, we get more hits than the statesman does. So here's how you can access what our agendas are. And it's not that wieldy. It's a little intimidating at first, but Chris breaks it down and says, hey, tell your friends and neighbors and everybody that cares, you know, here, here it is pretty easy. Couple clicks, you can see what's on the agenda. So anyways, just props to him. He's, he's awesome. And, uh, I really followed up with that gentleman and, and anyways, I just wanted to to point that out and let you know, he kind of closed the loop with, with them too. So.
Counsel, anything further? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hopland.
I would move that we go into executive session per Idaho code 74 dash 20681A.
I have a motion second to go into executive session. Uh, any, any motion to go into executive session second. Any questions or comments? Kirk, call the roll.
You give Mr. Mayor Schrader.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Burrow.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hi.
Horton. Hopland.
Hi.
All eyes motion carries. So we'll move into executive session.
We have a motion to come out of our executive session.
Out of executive session.
Motion to come out of executive session, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
He knows we are out of executive session, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, we are adjourned. I will call the city council regular meeting to order. For the record, today is Tuesday, August 27th, and it is 6:02 PM. Our first item of business will be roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilwoman Strainer, Councilman Overton, Councilwoman Perro, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Hugland.
Here. Our next item is pledge allegiance, please rise as we say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Our community invocation will be given by Cindy Reese. Come on up, and for those of you in attendance are online, please join us in the community invocation or take this for as a moment of silent reflection. Cindy.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to gather this day to do the will of the citizens and to be of service to them. We are especially thankful for the moisture that we received over the last few days. We are mindful, Father of the children starting school and ask a blessing for their safety as they travel to and from and as they are in their schools. We ask a blessing upon the teachers that they will be led to know the things they can do to be at the greatest service to the children and help the children to progress in their learning. We ask a blessing also upon our police and firemen that they'll be protected as they serve those in the community. We are grateful for the ability to live in this country and to have a representative government that is of the people and for the people. We ask a blessing upon all of those in leadership positions, that they will be sensitive to thy promptings, to know the right things to do, to make this valley in this area the best that it can be for all of the families therein. And we say these things and give these thanks in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Cindy. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cavanagh.
That we adopt the agenda as published.
Motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
He knows we have adopted the agenda. On the public forum, Mr. Clerk, looks like we have a couple people signed up. And I want to ask for the description of the topic, multi-family Chindon Boulevard. Is this the topic that's on the agenda? On, is it item number one, Linder Village? Yes. Okay, so we'll, we'll have you come and we'll, when we get to that point, we'll ask it, we won't do it in this public forum, that's for just general miscellaneous topics. So we'll, and that's Greg Hunter and Jason Hunter, correct? Okay, so we'll let you have, we're going to take action on that. There's an issue with that, so make sure you're aware. Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, we have anybody else online for?
Mr. President, no, that was everyone.
Okay, thank you. To move on to action items, item number one is a withdrawal request for Linder Village, located at the southeast core of North Linder and West Chindon Boulevard. This was a hearing that was continued to October 3rd, Mr. Neri, and now they're asking for withdrawal, so can you enlighten us?
Yes. So, Mr. President, members of the council, so it happens on a rare occasion, but it happens on occasion that an applicant will decide to withdraw. The reason we've asked to put it on the agenda tonight for that consideration is the noticing for the October 3rd meeting is coming up. It hasn't been done yet, and rather than incur the expense and time to notice a meeting, draw people's attention to come to the city council meeting for withdrawal, seemed like a lot of effort for both the public as well as the applicant and providing notice. So the thought was if the, if the council's desire is to grant that withdrawal, we grant that, we will then provide notice back in some form, probably through the website, probably through X store, let people know that the application's been withdrawn. But rather than go through the full hearing process, because when you do our normal public hearing, it looks like we're going to hear it. Well, if all we're going to hear it for is to withdraw it, it seemed like it would make more sense to simply move that along and do it this way, but you're certainly free to not, not take it up tonight and move it to the third, leave it on the third. We'll notice it up, we'll make sure the notice indicates the request is to withdraw it, but we just thought to expeditiously get this done with.
Any questions for Mr. Neri, my counsel?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Cavanagh.
Well, could we still do, even if we accept the withdrawal, could the city send out a notification like we normally would to the residents letting know that this has been withdrawn? I know typically we ask the applicant to pay for that, but in light of them, I think trying to be proactive and save the disruption of neighbors' lives, I appreciate that they're here tonight, but I also think that it's important that we get that information back out to them. I just, I don't know what that process is.
Yeah, we, Mr. Mr. President, members of council, Councilman Cavanagh, I mean, there's certainly no reason we can't, we could, we would use the same mailing list of what we were going to mail out. We probably just need to change the wording of it to reflect the action that's been taken. But there's certainly no reason we can't do that, if you'd like us to do that. Like I said, we were trying to make it appear if we're actually having hearing or we're not.
Right.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. President, I'm, I'll make a motion and maybe a quick commentary, because I know we had a couple people who signed up to speak in the public forum about this, but because there's a request, there isn't really a public hearing for us to to take commentary on because they're withdrawing the application. So I don't want you to feel like that we're ignoring you, but rather the case of what is before us. So, Mr. President, I move that we grant the withdrawal request for Linder Village H-2023-0005 and request that the clerk's office send out communication to our mailing list that surrounds that proposed development, informing those residents that this application has been withdrawn and there will not be a public hearing for it on October 5th.
Second. Right. We have a motion, a second to withdraw, agree to the withdrawal request as well as to notify the residents that it has been withdrawn if votes that way. So I'm assuming Mr. Clerk or Mr. Neri, we have to take a roll call vote on withdrawal, or is that a voice vote? Okay, voice vote on that. So all those in favor of the withdrawal request being granted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, all ayes, motion carries, so they have officially withdrawn that request to move forward.
Mr. President.
Councilman, or Mr. Neri.
President, members of the council, one other, one addition, Mr. Johnson, I already spoke it, so on the October 3rd agenda, we will still note it there, but note it was withdrawn on this date.
Yeah.
So even if the only place you followed along was the agendas, you'd see it and notice that it was withdrawn.
Good. So the Hunter folks can go back and say they successfully oversaw the withdrawal of the request. They there are times of charm. Great, thank you. Up next is a public hearing for H-2023-0030, Sessions Parkway subdivision. Sonya, what do you have for us tonight?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor is not here. Council President Hugland, Council. Sonya has a presentation for you tonight for Sessions Parkway Development Agreement Modification Application. This property is located at 2700 North Eagle Road on the east side of Eagle, approximately a third of a mile south of East Eustick Road. Little history on this property, a development agreement was recently approved for this site in June that included two options for conceptual development plans for the property and other provisions related to future development of the site. A final plat was approved earlier this year for this property that's in the signature process. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for the property is mixed use regional. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the existing development agreement to allow one building permit to be obtained prior to recrodation of the plat and allowance for submittal of a certificate of zoning compliance and design review application for subsequent proposed uses prior to recrodation of the plat and request for city council approval of a reduction of the buffer requirement in the CG zoning district to residential uses to the east from 25 feet to a minimum of eight feet. While it's preferred that a subdivision plat is recorded prior to submittal of a certificate of zoning compliance and designer view applications and subsequent building permit applications to ensure compliance with dimensional standards and construction of improvements for the overall site, it is not a UDC requirement. Therefore, staff is amenable to the request, provided that all of the street buffer landscaping along North Eagle Road, State Highway 55, including the 10-foot wide multi-use pathway in pedestrian lighting and the backage road along North Eagle Road from the north to the south boundary with connections to Eagle Road and the development to the east are completed prior to issuance of the first certificate of occupancy within the development as would be required if the property was not being subdivided. Staff has included these requirements as a provision of the amended development agreement in section 6B of the staff report. This reduction, if approved, would apply for hotel development on the site, development option number two in the development agreement. A reduction to the buffer width does not affect, I got my thing out of order here, I am so sorry. I was trying to figure this out as I was talking and I just realized, I'm going to back up a little bit, pardon me. The applicant is also requesting city council approval of a reduction of the buffer requirement in the CG district to multi-family residential uses, which are apartments to the east from 25 feet to a minimum of eight feet, as allowed by the UDC with notice to surrounding property owners. This reduction, if approved, would only apply if a hotel develops on the site, which is option number two in the development agreement. If the property develops in accord with option number one, the full buffer width would be provided. A reduction to the buffer width does not affect building setbacks. All structures are required to set back from the property line a minimum of the buffer width required in the district, which is 25 feet. A seven-foot wide perimeter buffer is being provided on the property to the east along the shared property line, which would result in a total buffer width of 15 feet if council approves the reduced buffer width proposed. A mix of trees, one per 35 lineal feet, and shrubs are being provided within the buffer as shown on the approved landscape plan. And that is the one there on the lower right. With the perimeter buffer, parking, a drive aisle and pedestrian walkway, a minimum of 75 feet is being provided between the shared property line and the nearest residential structure to the east. All buffers to residential uses are required to be comprised of, but not limited to, a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees, shrubs, lawn, or other vegetative ground cover that results in a barrier that allows trees to touch within five years of planting. Trees that will not touch until maturity outside of this timeframe must be supplemented with additional materials such as tall, columnar evergreen shrubs or other qualifying materials. Where proposed adjacent land uses cannot be adequately buffered with plant materials, the city may require inclusion of a wall, fence, or other type of screen that mitigates noise and/or unsightly uses. If a wall or fence at least six foot tall is provided, the planting requirement may be reduced to a minimum of one tree per 35 lineal feet plus shrubs, lawn, or other vegetative ground cover. There is a 10-foot wide pressure irrigation easement that runs along the east boundary of this site, which may prohibit trees. If so, alternative compliance should be requested to the buffer material standards in the UDC. Staff recommends at least a portion of the required trees be provided within the perimeter buffer on the adjacent property to the east, which is also under ownership by the same developer, resulting in a barrier that allows trees to touch within five years of planting to screen the residential uses from the hotel. The remainder of the required trees could be planted elsewhere within the site. Staff is of the opinion the reduced buffer width is of the opinion the reduced buffer width planted with extra trees that result in a barrier, combined with the distance to the nearest residential structures, provides an adequate buffer to the future residential uses from the proposed hotel. If council believes additional buffering of the residential property is needed, a wall or fence at least six foot tall could be required on the shared property line. Development Plan Options 1 and 2 in the development agreement depict a north-south pathway within the perimeter buffer along the eastern boundary of the site and pedestrian connections to the east to the multifamily development, which is currently in the development process, at the north and south boundaries of the site. Staff is of the opinion the pathway would be better utilized if it were located along the west, excuse me, the east side of the main north-south drive aisle in the commercial portion of the development, rather than on the shared property line between the commercial and residential development. Let me show you with the cursor right here where I'm talking about. It's this driveway right here. The sidewalk shown on the concept plan, the development agreement, is along the east boundary right here. To better accommodate the pathway in this location and the hotel's, staff recommends a lesser buffer width of five feet is provided along the east boundary, which would total 12 feet with a seven-foot wide buffer on the adjacent residential property, with a minimum four-foot wide sidewalk along the east side of the drive aisle. Staff further recommends decorative crosswalks are provided across internal drives where walkways are proposed for pedestrian safety. Pedestrian walkway connections should still be provided to the residential property to the east at the north and south ends of the site, as depicted on the concept plans in the development agreement. Staff is recommending changes to the development agreement accordingly. Written testimony was received from Stephanie Hopkins, KM Engineering, the applicant's representative. They are in agreement with the staff recommendation in the staff report. Staff is recommending approval with the provisions noted in the report. The applicant is here tonight to present testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Thank you. Thank you, Sonya. Can you just explain a little bit the rationale of the relocation of the pathway and why staff feels that that is a better location?
Yes, Madam Councilwoman, the pathway along the east side of the main north-south drive aisle, if you can see on the site plan that's on the lower right hand, this is the entire site here. The hotel is planned on the eastern boundary of the site. This is going to carry this drive aisle along the west boundary of the hotel, which is right here, is going to carry most of the traffic through the development. The sidewalk plan between the commercial and the residential is just clear over here on the east boundary, and there are no pedestrian facilities that run north-south in the commercial portion.
Any other questions for staff? No, well, the applicant would like to... Your name and address?
Thank you, Mr. President, Council, Stephanie Hopkins with KM Engineering, 5725 North Discovery Way in Boise. Thank you for having us here this evening. It's nice to see you all. And thank you to staff for doing such a great job of summarizing our requests. We have been coordinating with her quite a bit in the past couple of weeks, trying to kind of work through some of these conditions and just trying to make the site work with the second concept plan in the development agreement. So I think I have a presentation that I think she may... Don't it. Okay, so we came before you in January of this year with the development agreement modification and the subdivision for Sessions Parkway. You approved it at that point and with two concept plans, as Sonya mentioned. This, tonight, we're going to be discussing a development agreement modification that will apply primarily to the second concept plan, which is the extended stay hotel concept. There's actually a conditional use permit that will be heard by Planning and Zoning Commission on September 7th for that application. So the site plan changes, anything that kind of occurs this evening, if approved, would go forward with that site plan. Just to get you situated, I think you know where we are. We're just to the west of the Village Apartments on the east side of Eagle and south of Commercial Development, north of Regency at River Valley and River Valley Road. This is the, this is the concept plan that was approved with the development agreement. Basically, exactly the same, but as Sonya was kind of discussing, there was a pathway that was approved on the east side that we have now relocated to the west side of the site, adjacent to the north-south drive aisle. We initially, when we were proposing this concept plan, had kind of conceptually laid things out. As we've been working with the hotel user, the site's a little bit tighter for the amount of landscaping they want to have adjacent to the building, as well as other pedestrian pathways. And so that's the primary reason for the decreased buffer width that we are requesting on the east side. So as mentioned, we're requesting two modifications, two provisions in the development agreement. The first one is the subject property shall be subdivided prior to submittal of the first certificate of zoning compliance and building permit for the property. We're requesting that we can, that the developer could get a building permit prior to plat recreation and the flexibility to allow tenants or future tenants to apply for certificate of zoning compliance and design review prior to the plat recording. We are working, the reason for this is the frontage on State Highway 55 is ITD jurisdiction, so they need to review, and they're pretty backlogged and busy. So it's been challenging to get through their review process in a quick amount of time. So we just want the flexibility really to be allow, to allow future tenants to kind of get their approvals in place before committing to a site and knowing that they want to locate here. Second, and this is just kind of giving you an overview of, this is the State Highway 55 frontage. We've been working with ITD and getting, we actually recently got our plans approved. So the plat is moving forward, but the provisions, modifying the provisions will still be helpful for the developer moving forward. The second DA provision that we'd like to request be changed is the 25-foot landscape buffer that we were discussing. The primary reason for this is the site is just pretty compact and it's difficult to fit the hotel's footprint, as well as they like increased buffers from the edge of their buildings to the parking. And so in order to accommodate that, we've kind of squeezed everything and given the use of an extended stay hotel and the Village Department use, we figured that those uses are pretty consistent and compatible, residential and feel, and that a reduced buffer here would make sense, would also provide us the opportunity to relocate a pathway onto the west side of the property to provide additional pedestrian connections, as Sonya was talking about. So... You have a graphic that... Don't mind the USB that I can show you the... We created a graphic just to show the different dimensions to kind of depict exactly how far away the buildings are from each other, and then parking areas and landscape barriers too. So I think that'll be useful to review. The council members. So this depicts how far away everything is from each other. So there's about 15 feet. We, so I guess I should mention, we have started to revise landscape plan and our site plan in accordance with Sonya's recommendations, just to make sure that everything will fit and that we could accommodate the buffers as well as landscaping within the buffers. And so we've started to shift the site based on the five feet on the east side that she's recommending to you all. And so this is reflective of those changes as we've kind of gone through. As you can see, it does show the sidewalk connection on the far west side, adjacent to the drive aisle, as well as connections to the north. So then there was another condition that had required a connection of the sidewalk here that we've added as well. So the total landscape buffer between properties, for the Village Apartments property and the Sessions Parkway property at the north part of the property would be 15 feet. Distance between the edge of the hotel building to the edge of the further, the farthest, most west apartment building would be about 176 feet. There's about 87 feet between the edge of the hotel to the property line. And about 12 feet on the south side between the landscape buffer between the properties, between the Sessions Parkway property and the Village Apartments property. There's a little bit of a jog in the property line, so it kind of goes bigger on top to smaller on the bottom. So looking at these distances, we feel that the decreased landscape buffer is appropriate and will work well with the development. The pressurized irrigation line that Sonya mentioned is private, so there is an opportunity to locate trees within that easement, and we will work on locating them in a way that won't conflict with existing trees, as well as the pressurized irrigation line. So that's something we'll continue to coordinate with them on. I think, yeah, that's the extent of our request. The developer is here this evening. If you have any questions for either him or I, come up and discuss further. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Council, questions?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. Hi, Stephanie.
Hi.
So if we were, if this was three-dimensional image here and we were standing on the south, looking, you know, right on the property line, looking at the two properties, we would see the back garage, I'm assuming these are garages here on the very west side of the apartments. You have the back garage, and then we'd have 15 feet of landscape buffer, and we'd have a curb, and then we'd have the parking lot. And so that landscape buffer, you're saying, so it's truly 15 feet of landscape buffer, not including curbing, you know? I want to understand that. Or is that like the landscape buffer, the curb, you know? So... Mr. President, Councilwoman Perrow, that would be, that would be strictly landscaping. So on the south side, it's actually 12 feet from curb to curb on the inside, just landscaping. And then on the north side, it's 15.
Okay. And so, and which portion of this, or how much of this is not able to be treed? Is it, is there an easement that runs like the full length north to south, and you can add trees on the sides? Or are we talking about not allowing any trees in that entire 15-feet section?
Mr. President, Councilwoman Perrow, the 10-foot GI easement is, it kind of encroaches actually into the parking. We can't see it here, but it comes in probably about two or three feet into the parking, because it's, because we've shifted the landscape buffer over essentially. So we can locate, because it's a private line, we can locate things over it and within it. We'll just need to make sure that we're not hitting the pipe itself or we're conflicting with the existing trees that have already been installed. So we'll need to look at that a little bit more, just to make sure that we're kind of spacing them accordingly. But I don't think we'll have a problem meeting the requirements. The one, I think it's one per 35 feet. Sonya, is that correct?
Any other questions for the applicant? Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us. Could you just refresh my memory as to the height of the hotel and the height of the apartments?
Mr. President, Councilwoman Strater, so the apartments, I may have to ask Trevor for help on that, because I can't remember off the top of my head. But the hotel's four stories, I want to say it's right around like 35 feet. I could look at my computer and tell you for sure. Okay, so they're both four stories.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And then I believe the multifamily apartments, when you came last time, were still unoccupied. Is that still the case? Okay. So it's not as if someone will wake up and find a wall.
Yeah, I know.
There wasn't one before.
Mr. President, Councilwoman Strater, they are currently being constructed but not occupied. And yes, you're correct, they won't be surprised.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Right. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody in the audience. We don't have anybody signed up, nobody online that is a private citizen to testify. So council, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
Happy to kick off the discussion. Seems to me like it's pretty straightforward in this case to make an exception to our typical landscape buffer. I thought that the conditions that staff had placed were reasonable. Happy to hear if anyone has a different opinion before we close a public hearing.
Yep. Mr. President.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I do have a little bit different view on this. And no disrespect, Stephanie, it's nice seeing you, appreciate you. I don't agree with the argument that visitor housing in a hotel is the same type of use as apartments. These are residents, and I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish. I'm just not supportive of, I'm not supportive of condition 8A1C with the landscape. Approved is appropriate and does provide ample space and distance, both in terms of activity as well as noise and vision, as proposed. So I just have a different view. I think that what was presented and what was approved is appropriate.
Mr. President. Councilman Overton.
Hearing both views, I'm... When it was first proposed, looking at the distances between buildings, I had no concerns with this change to the development agreement. I echo the thoughts that Councilmember Strater had, that I don't have a problem with this limited landscaping buffer to accomplish their goals. I'd be in favor of it.
And just to chime in, I appreciated Councilwoman Pro bringing up the fact that there's garages there that kind of, that adds to that, that buffer, that does make a difference. It's not just open, but there's basically a wall there. So makes sense.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I'm just sitting here trying to envision this, because this is a really unique grouping of, you know, structures and uses and with hotels, you know? I think there, in my opinion, there's a safety element of just folks coming and going. And so I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't, that there was an open space. And there was a suggestion that, at council's pleasure, we could recommend a fence, but I actually think that would probably create a safety issue to have a fence and then have the garage walls and have this space in between that's empty. I would invite, with the council president's permission, our police, if our police have any concerns about that, to share their thoughts. But I have, I do have a little bit of concern to Councilman Cavanagh's point of just, that's a pretty narrow 15 feet between, you know, a use that could have different safety elements than residential. Any thoughts?
Deb Brown, go ahead.
President, council members, I don't...
Council, other questions, comments?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
No further thoughts. I move that we close a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing on item 2023, H-2023-0030. Those in favor, sign my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Councilwoman Strater.
Just... Just happy to make a motion and. After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H2023-0030. As presented in the staff report for today's hearing date with the conditions that were listed by staff. Just a little additional commentary. You know, I, to me is a pretty limited exception in this case and generally not a fan of changing buffers. But in this case, the joint ownership of both adjoining properties, to me, it was a little bit of what swayed me in favor of it.
Motion. Motion, second to approve the request by the applicant. Mr. Clerk, could you please call roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Mr. President, is there open for discussion about?
Well, no, we're, we're in the middle of the roll call, so.
But you, usually there's a call for discussion after a motion is made.
That's true. I did not do that. So with the, with the request.
The maker of the motion would draw the motion for now in the interest of discussion always. Because I always appreciate hearing what my colleagues have to say.
Second agrees. All right. Thank you for the grace of the rookie mistake. So discussion on the motion. Well, on the upcoming motion now, so.
Mr. President, could, is discussion, allow me to ask staff a question that I didn't get to ask after the applicant made their presentation? Thank you. Sonia, I just want to, it's a real basic question. I just want to understand because I haven't seen this wording before. What results, what, what are trees that are appropriate to touch within five years of planting? And how is that different from what is typically accepted? Because that's, that seems like a, a, a condition that would be hard to track, I guess. How does the city, you know, decide what is a tree that is five years, touching in five years?
Councilwoman Perrow, counsel. The landscape architect, they have qualifications when they, you know, to make those choices and tree choices, class choices. They have different class of trees that grow to different heights and different widths. So based on their qualifications as a landscape architect, they make those decisions. And so that's, that specific requirement is, is a standard in our code for buffers to adjacent residential land uses. That's where that comes from.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. Clarification question. So is that, is, in our code, is that a buffer that's typically 25 feet, 10 feet? Residential buffers are 10 feet, right? The residence to residence, we're talking about shrinking a commercial buffer. So is this standard the same as what is in a commercial buffer normally?
Landscape buffers to residential uses, the widths are based on the dimensional standards of the district in which they were located. So they vary. CG, for instance, the CG district requires a minimum 25-foot buffer to residential uses. The LO district is less.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments in council? Hearing none, Councilwoman Strater.
Mr. President, thank you. I move that we, well, I guess, do we open the public hearing again? No, we didn't. Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion again. After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony to approve file number H2023-0030. As presented in the staff report for today's hearing date of August 22nd, 2023, with the conditions as outlined by staff.
I have a motion, a second on this item. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Hoagland.
Aye. Four ayes, one no. Motion carries and the item is approved. Up next, we have ordinance, ordinance number 23-2029. Mr. Clerk, could you read this ordinance by title only?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an ordinance related to Bordeaux Estates, H2022-0062. Ending a portion of land lying in the south half of the northeast quarter of Section 25. Township for north, range one west, Boise Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. More particularly described in Exhibit A, rezoning two acres of such real property from RUT to R8 zoning district. Directing city staff to alter all applicable use scenario maps as well as the official zoning maps and all official maps depicting the boundaries. And the zoning districts of the city Meridian in accordance with this ordinance. Writing the copy of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law. Repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Is there anyone who'd like to be, who would like this ordinance read but in hold? None. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. President, I believe we need a motion.
Oh, that's right. We need a motion. Forgot about that part.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we approve ordinance number 23-2029.
Motion, a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater. Overton. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. Mr. Clerk, would you please read, read the title for ordinance 23-2030?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance demanding Meridian City Code 113D4 regarding science repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
So ordinance has been read by its title and you request to read it in whole. Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we approve ordinance number 23-2030.
I have a motion, a second to approve ordinance 23-2030. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater.
Aye.
Overton. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. And now item number five, ordinance 23-2031. Mr. Clerk, could you read this by title?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an ordinance repealing and replacing Meridian City Code, Section 1326C regarding alcohol in city parks. Repealing and replacing Meridian City Code, Section 1326S regarding parking in city parks. Repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
This ordinance has been read by title only. Is there any request to have it read in whole? Hearing none. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, a motion. Here we go. Councilwoman Perrow, I just tried to, you know, Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we approve ordinance number 23-2031.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater.
Aye.
Overton. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. I'm sorry, four to one, motion carries. Thank you. Item number six, ordinance 23-2032. Mr. Clerk, could you please read this ordinance by title?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a longer one here. So it's an ordinance demanding Title VII Meridian City Code to traffic and parking. Amending the title of Title VII, Chapter One, Meridian City Code to Traffic Code. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 712 regarding traffic infractions. Repealing Meridian City Code, Section 713 regarding repairing vehicles in city streets. 714 regarding emergency vehicles restrictions near fire. And 715 regarding school and city property. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 716 speed restrictions. Repealing Meridian City Code, Section 717 regarding driving through funeral procession. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 718 regarding U-turns. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 719 regarding electric power assisted scooters. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 7110 regarding center turn lanes. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 7111 regarding use of public or private property as a throughway. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 7112 regarding negligent driving. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 7113 regarding air compression brakes. Repealing and replacing Meridian City Code, Section 721 regarding definitions. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 722 regarding prohibited parking. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 725 regarding parking on public streets other than alleys. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 726 regarding parking on public property other than streets and alleys and parking in city parks. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 727 regarding parking on city property where parking permit required. Repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
For this ordinance read by title only, is there any desire to have the whole ordinance read? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Council President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we approve ordinance number 23-2032.
Motion, a second to approve. Is there any discussion? Not, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater.
Aye.
Overton. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. Next item is future meeting topics. Any discussion there?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
Yes, thank you. Just a future meeting topic. I think it would be fantastic if we had each department present the next five years CFP for us this fall. And that would, I think, help us get a little more visibility into the CFP as we have discussed during the budgeting process.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Cavanagh.
Did a nice job steering the ship for us tonight. Appreciate having you at the helm. Well done.
A little speedboat action there.
Mr. Mr. President.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I would point out that we're done before seven o'clock and the mayor's not here. So we have a, I think, a good scapegoat for why meetings go long. Mr. President, I move with that, we adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. We are adjourned.